Ballpark that like five hundred and six thousand and five hundred and eight thousand. So just over a million dollars from those two agencies. Then we take for the biennial. And so we take those state funds and then we divide those up proportionally with the counties based upon the amount of funds that we bill each county. So that we create a cost here. So when Shane talks about the cost to have a program, we're able to typically offset that cost with some funds from federal dollars and state dollars. Ballpark on average around thirty thousand dollars that we're able to kind of contribute towards those programs. Now each biennial, that's always subject to the funding from the state. On a particular note, this year, the governor's revised budget has cut that funding, except for the statutory required sixty thousand per year for O D F N W general funds. So stakeholder groups obviously that are interested in that, each time that comes around in a biennial budget have to go to work to fight that in the committee and get funding restored. But that's never anything that we can guarantee. We really hope and wish. So come July one, under the governor's revised budgets, we're going to be cut from around a million dollars down to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the biennial, from state funds. So there's a strong interest to make sure that that doesn't happen. And then when we have counties that are interested, this is the time here, if counties tell us that they're interested in some type of cooperative program now, then begin the planning process to give them a slice of the pie, to give them some shares. And so we have to figure out how to, you know, based upon the level that the county's wanting to start at, where we can offer up. And then after they've been on for a full year, then they're part of our regular calculations with all of our participating counties. So counties that do decide to come in, that is a benefit to the program that we can create that cost share. And I think last year commissioners, I pitched you probably seventy-five thousand, and that's because we did have some cost share money to get it up to the hundred thousand. This year with it being uncertain on the governor's budget, you know, can't guarantee that we're going to have money to cost share with.
I mean, we can set it as a priority, but I'm just, when I look at the budget and kind of where we are right now, we haven't even gone through our assumptions for this next year yet. And, you know, it's not necessarily looking all that hot. So things do change. It's really tight.
Go ahead. Well.
Yeah, Jason.
So I'm just trying to come up with some, some kind of thing. So Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like our biggest problem is mid-January to April, mid-April. So we really only need three months worth of help, whether that be a person or, or, you know, whatever we throw in, twenty thousand dollars or whatever it is, fly a few times and do some raven control, coyote control.
That's a priority.
Right.
I mean, that's the pinch today. But if you had a guy full-time, I mean, there's everything from ground squirrels to bulls to all kinds of, you know, take problem cats to actually knowing what the hell, working with John, knowing what the hell's going on in the county and what are the... Then you could keep a guy busy full-time pretty easy and it'd be a huge benefit. How you fund it, I don't know. But yeah, now's the pinch time, right?
Right now's the pinch time, and so ground squirrels, bulls, we do have avenues to do that. It's not free. That's all on the landowner, but...
The thing, how much more effective Chris could be with a guy like this.
Right.
Because when those guys get backed up and they can't get two for three weeks, then you got baby squirrels out there.
Right.
Then you're not going to get them.
Right. And then you're off-laid a little one.
Yeah, and it's all, you know, Chris works his tail off.
Right.
Want out of it, so... Yeah, I just think a guy like this could make great strides in helping John and Austin.
Yeah.
You guys know, you're all producers, you know. So...
The stuff we've done in the past, we've flown in Water Valley too. I mean, and we're just trying to come up with some way to have our districts become a priority and then, I don't know.
I think you need to think about a district.
I think, just talking out loud here, if maybe we can skim by with the bare minimum for a couple of years, maybe things will improve in our budget. Three, four, five years out, potentially some revenue will come in at some point.
But doesn't that leave this issue subject to the whims of the economy and whether Ruby goes broke and all those kind of things? Form a district. Form a district, that way everybody kicks in.
The thing with forming the district, you know, just, I'll just say this straight up. In my limited experience, forming a district is much better off starting as a ground, a grassroots attempt rather than something that commissioners initiate. Commissioner-initiated taxing district proposals fail about ninety-five percent of the time.
That might be a good project for the stock growers.
I almost knew that was going to be that way.
James did not talk about it.
No, we did not, but I was like, I'm looking at Scott and I'm like, he's going to throw James in the bus.
We're going to form a committee.
There was a bus and there was definitely room under it going straight to James. But no, I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, I like the idea, you know, but at the same time, have you guys done, when was the last time there was a coyote derby down here? I don't know.
There's, there's one this winter.
There was one this winter.
It was not the scale, it was Harney County, I think. I was talking to one of the guys, ran it up there and there were like six hundred guys or something crazy.
Right.
Like it's big.
We, we, we got pretty close to it up on the north end one year, but we, they were auctioning off like a couple of different guns and different things like that, so that makes a big difference.
It's more difficult to do in this valley.
Yeah, and that's what I'm just, I don't, I'm, I'm thinking about the Goose Lake Valley specifically, you know, and I just, I feel like that's going to be really hard for you guys.
Yeah, I feel like there'd be a lot of private land over there.
Yeah, just like going around taking shots and stuff.
You know, if a taxing district in Klamath didn't take in Klamath, the town, we couldn't do that here. Because the town is, it has problems too, you know?
The deer.
The deer and the skunks and lions.
Right.
I could still see the one for the pool when I shot that one.
Yeah, but I, I don't know if we would have the same problem as Klamath was dealing with, you know, in terms of they, like he was stating that they kept the urban area out of it because they were concerned that though there was a large portion of that population that wouldn't support it, I don't think you'd have that problem as much here. I mean, heck, you live in, in the town. You vote for it, right?
Well, my choice.
All right, so we heard a suggestion that maybe the stock growers could help out.
Shane's up.
Okay, go ahead Shane.
So Willawa County has a taxing district that includes the towns as well. John Williams, who serves on the Wolf Committee for the Oregon Catalans, he's, was an extension agent, and so he's a knowledgeable source on that, how Willawa set that up. It was, it was years ago, but they have a taxing district that includes everybody in the county.
Okay.
Shane or Kevin, are there other, other funding mechanisms in the state that, that would be worth mentioning, other versions of, of mechanisms to fund somewhere?
So, well, what's in existence, Douglas County, Coos County, Klamath County and Willawa County are the four counties that have some type of taxing district. Willawa County set up a few decades ago, some pros and cons with that, Klamath County and how they formed theirs. Douglas County did kind of a hybrid, but there's a problem, and that's because the authorization for that sunsetted last year. They were given authority in the state legislature to, to, to try and experiment for five years. Last year in the session, they tried to get that extended. And honestly, the coyote, the coyote bill took precedence and that didn't make it through the session. And so it did not get renewed, and so it sunsetted. So Douglas County no longer has that authority and nor does Coos County. Douglas County currently, the commissioners decided to pick, they got the full contract back up again. Coos County isn't, and so they're forming a nonprofit and they're still working out what that looks like. Klamath, I think, kind of saw some of those shortfalls and that's why they did not take that route and they chose a different route where it was voted on. And I, I think that provided a little bit more stability for them and why that is still working. So I think talking with them and getting some more details of how they form that process, it took them a while to get that put together. I think that's probably your, your best route. There's been discussion over the years of livestock associations, you know, forming head taxes and things like that specific for predator damage management across the state like other states have implemented, but there's nothing like that that's currently functioning.
So I got a question for you guys too. Other than the, the treatment of eggs for ravens, is there other things that work or is that the one and only?
Using a Aviside is the most effective. There's other options besides putting it in eggs. There's other baits we can put it on, but that's the most effective. You know, doing shooting and trapping can, can help a little bit, but it's not as efficient as the Aviside.
Okay, going to wrap this discussion up. The final, final.
So I guess one more question. So John, with our deer population dropping, I mean, this has got to help to reduce lions, the coyotes and the bear, to a certain extent, the predatory stuff, correct?
Yeah, with the, with the larger predators, with cougars and bears, you know, this is still a damage response tool, so generally we're not talking about enough removal to affect populations. And you got to consider too that essentially all available habitat for cougars is considered occupied. So as you remove a cougar, especially if it's an older adult tom that is maintaining its territory, you're surrounded by younger cats that are going to flood that back in. So essentially damage response is, is not a population tool. On the coyote front, you know, in certain places like, for instance, the Goose Lake Valley, if, if, you know, that, in time correctly in the spring, when pups are emerging from the den, that can, that can have an effect. But on the bigger stuff, not so much.
Commissioner Iverson, where would you like to take this discussion?
I think we need to figure, I like the idea of creating a district. And I totally understand what Commissioner Williams has come from. When commissioners try to raise taxes, it doesn't look good. But on the other hand, it's a need. I think we need to, that could be a year out or two years out, right? And so we need something now to help. My thought is if we can come up with twenty grand and ten grand for the flying and ten grand for the ravens now, would be my suggestion and see where we can come up with those funds. And then let the stock growers put something together and you guys would have our full support. We can get, we can get Willawa County's information or Klamath County's information to get a start. I would suggest that we don't, we leave in all the urban areas because otherwise, number one, you're not going to have enough money to support it. Number two, we have problems right here in Lakeview and so, right in town. So I seen a coyote right here the other day. He had something in his mouth. I don't know if it was a cat or chicken or, it was right here in town. We have problems, so...
Okay.
That would be my suggestion, so...
You want to form a committee or are we just going to go with that? What you just said.
I think you need a committee, work with the stock growers. I think it should be a partnership deal with the county. And get together and figure out what kind of taxing district it is, because I don't know, I haven't looked at the statutes on that. And maybe make your county lawyer available to help so when it's done, it ends up being something that works not just for the stock growers, but that the county can get behind too.
Yeah, you have to talk to Dave Knowles on how much we'd need it to be and what the, what the total tax would be. But for now, I'd like to see if we can't come up with twenty grand and...
And just put that in our priorities as we go forward through the budget process.
Well, I mean, we need it before. I don't know if we can come up with it before, but...
You want it right now, this year?
Yeah, because by the time we do our budgets in May, a lot of the coyote problem will be moved and the raven problem will still be in full force and so...
Would you guys be interested in using two fifteen moderate dollars?
Could we? How could we though? I mean, because that's, I thought that's for economic development only, but I guess...
Well, it affects our stock growers and then...
What do we have in mind right now?
Probably eighty-something.
So if we can do that, that's where we can get it.
I think that's our only avenue to take that right now, but that's up to you guys.
Let's...
You want to bring this to our next meeting?
Tomorrow's meeting. Yeah, let's think about it, bring it in tomorrow.
But as far as setting up a committee, you guys could put me on there. Go ahead, Jason, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Oh, I was just thinking, in the interest of trying to do something with the taxing district and to stretch whatever dollars you can come up with, make it a cost share so that those landowners know that this is a problem, you're going to have to pony up some money, get that mentality going first. The other one was the grant stuff we spoke about last week. Do you still want me to move ahead with that then? And, because there was APIS funds available.
Anything that can help us. Because none of it's a done deal, you know?
Right.
And we don't get it if we don't put in for it, so...
Okay. I, I worked on it a little bit, but honestly, I had no idea what dollar amount we needed to be searching for.
I would say, like I talked about before, twenty grand. If we can get it, we can get it, and if we don't, we don't, so...
I talked with Field Rep, with Senator Merkley's office yesterday. It didn't hit his top three. Did the, did the grasshopper control? No? Okay, oh, I have that, then I'll, I'll scrap that then. But we're welcome to apply. Okay.
See, the thing is, that's something we didn't talk about either, is the, the grasshoppers. You know, that is a big stinking problem. You know, we've paid, our family has paid by itself to have our yocum sprayed two times, you know? And they just swarm in there from the fed side, you know? But if we don't do anything, we won't have any grass, no.
I spoke with O D A last week, I know we're getting off topic, but just for number wise, O D A sponsored twenty-eight thousand five hundred acres of treatment that cost eighteen dollars last year an acre. Like, you know, we're, we're talking three hundred and some thousand dollars worth of...
And we're all running around coordinating all this stuff individually, like I do bugging USDA for somebody to fly. I just call it flying to Nick and then tell talks to these guys and they come giving me a warning. So to have somebody in the county to coordinate everything from grasshoppers to coyotes, I mean, I think from the private side, we'd look at the district and be happy to pay some tax, but it's a benefit to the whole county too.
Well, the grasshopper definitely benefits the whole county.
I, I was blown away about how much was spent last year. And there was, I spoke with Macy's and they said there was another twenty thousand easy. On top of that, they just didn't get them. They ran out of funding and landlord didn't want to pay for it, so...
And there were private landlords paying for spraying, just out of their pocket too, that wasn't even working with O D A.
Yeah, that, that was just O D A funded projects, it was twenty-five thousand, twenty-eight thousand five hundred acres, so... All right, got to wrap this topic up. Any final thoughts? Okay, sounds like we got a plan. I'm hearing that we look now for twenty...
Send an email and we can get together next week, me and you and Jason, and get started.
Okay.
We can do that.
Okay, afternoons.
Yeah. Okay, so Commissioner Iverson, you got the lead on this?
Yeah.
All right, thank you everybody for the visit on this. It was a great discussion and thanks Shane and Kevin for joining us. Sure appreciate that. Good discussion and hopefully we'll come up to some potential solutions.
John, do you want to be on that email?
Happy to.
Can you get us some Fed money? Like what we need it tomorrow.
Okay, got to move on guys, so we got another timed item here at ten o'clock. We need to knock out a couple of things. If anybody wants to hop up now, they're more than welcome to. Melanie, I forgot to ask, do we have any additions or releases to the meeting?
We do, we have two. We have a twenty-twenty-three order for sale county properties and more industrial water and sewer extension.
Okay. Thank you.
John, thank you very much.
All right, next up, we're going to call on Kara Albertson to talk about Esri.
Thank you gentlemen very much.
See you, Scott.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Kara Albertson, I'm a Lake County G I S department head. I have a couple things, this is a, is a new department. We have a lot of admin things that need to be taken care of and make it a working department. So first on my list is Esri licenses, so I work with ArcMap and ArcPro almost every day. And so currently we have Arc, ArcPro Basic. It's very useful and speaking with other counties, they requested or they suggested that I get two additional licenses, which includes Arc G I S Advanced and Arc G I S Spatial Analyst. These just help with being able to do further analysis and with Spatial Analy, Spatial Analyst, you can perform more hydraulic, hydrographic and topographic and statistical analysis outside of just being able to look at basic imagery and elevation data. And with Arc Advanced, it just allows you to adjust the parameters of any output and again processes you run. You can just have it more, have more extensive parameters. So the cost upfront, the quote that I received for Arc Advanced is fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And that's a perpetual license, so you just pay that upfront and no maintenance fees and that would be that. But it would be forty-one or four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per year if we were to go yearly. And I think I did the math, then it'll pay for itself in three, three and a half years. And then the Spatial Analyst is six hundred and fifty dollars a year, or you can do the perpetual license upfront again with all maintenance costs included, and that would be two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So that's it for those licenses and that brings me into...
Before you start, so the licenses, we have to have the licenses for you to do your work?
Yes, correct.
Hang on one second, I have a question. Was it just the one bid that we received or did you put out for any other companies that have something similar to this or is this like a sole source thing?
Yeah, it's a sole source because we only work with ArcMap and ArcPro and that all falls under Esri. And so Esri is the one who gives us those licenses to be able to work with their software.
So Esri stands for Environmental Systems Research Institute, for people that don't know what the acronym is.
Jason, you have?
I, I don't know the legality of it, but so Lake County C W M A has the advanced and spatial analysis. We pay for one hundred dollars a year for four licenses. I use two of them.
Interesting.
And like I can give my license, like I share one with the watershed council.
Is that both the advanced and the analysis?
Yep.
Analyst?
Yep.
Okay, well maybe...
I, I don't know if I can, if I can share it with the government entity, but like 501(c)(3) is get it super cheap. I mean, I pay four hundred for four of them.
We should do some more data into the Esri.
Just, just saying, I happen to have some experience in this one, so...
Yeah, because you guys use it for all your mapping.
Yeah, and it is the only one, like everybody uses it.
Right.
Like everybody.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Kara, you want to, what's the next one you want to talk about? B O R? Ormap?
Yeah, so that brings me into the Ormap award letter from the grant we applied for a couple of months ago. So we applied for a grant to go towards a laptop and monitor and a plotter, a server and Esri licensing. So we did receive ninety-nine hundred dollars for the Esri licensing. And for a new server, which we still haven't quite discussed, buying, just because we're still waiting on some more data transfers towards me from Deschutes County. And then the new plotter, we got fifty-four hundred dollars for that. And the laptop and monitors, we got twenty-five hundred dollars for that. So altogether from Ormap, we received twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. And that's just something that needs to be signed by you guys so everybody can receive that award money.
Just keep them on the record.
Okay.
Well, it helps.
Mm-hmm, definitely.
Okay.
And then the last bit on my agenda is an intergovernment, government agreement from Polk County. So they have somebody who works closely with Ormap and he contracted through Ormap by Polk County, I believe. His name is Dean. Anyway, he would like to do some work for us transferring or converting our data into usable working formats, because right now it hasn't really been touched for a while and we're trying to transfer data from going from ArcMap and being able to use it more in ArcPro. And so Ormap would pay him to work for us, work for our G I S.
Who would pay for him?
Ormap.
Ormap.
Yep. And I'm not sure about how much that would cost, that might have to be in here. I'm not sure it would cost Ormap, but it wouldn't cost us anything. But just another thing for you guys to look at this, I G A and sign it if that was okay here.
So no actual costs associated with this I G C, I G A?
Right, right, to us.
Well, no cost to us, to us.
All right, anything else Kara? Any questions commissioners?
Moment.
This job, I want to get my grant.
Thank you. Have a safe travels. Okay, we're up on a timed item now and it's Donna Palmer with Youth Mentor, if she's ready.
We are ready.
Hi Donna.
Hi. So I just wanted to give you guys an update.
So go ahead and state your name for the rectors.
Donna Palmer, the director of the Youth Mentor Program and this is my new assistant.
Hi, I'm Brianna Kueke.
And so since I've been here last, because I've been with Mentor Program about a year and a half, and it's exciting because it's grown a lot. We are now, we have Girl Talk in Northlake and, and we have Team Entering in Northlake and we're in Paisley with Girl Talk and Team Entering. And I'm also having Team Entering out at Union. So the... So the numbers, in fact, our Girl Talk for this nine-week session, we have twenty-five girls. We have twenty-two in Northlake and Paisley twelve. So the numbers are like, the kids are excited and everybody wants to join, and it's good. It's just growing fast. The Team Entering, we are now walking to the Daily Middle School because there really wasn't any room for us at the school with the, I guess, until the building is open for the daycare and the. Daycare and.
Pre-school.
Mm-hmm. So we have over a hundred in the Team Entering at the four locations. And there is a need for, I'm calling it Boys Club, it will not be named that. We're trying to.
We're trying.
Cool name. So next fall, so this year, when school starts, we're gonna have a Boys Club. We'll have fourth, fifth and sixth grade. And Holly Vore is our person that's doing Team Entering and Girl Talk at Northlake. And she goes, we need it up here. It's like, oh wait, let me just have, you know, the first nine weeks especially. You know, I don't know if I'd call it pilot program or what, get that going. And then we will have it up at Northlake. And even though to.
What were the grades again?
For the girls? For the girls, they're fifth and sixth. Team Entering is third and fourth, one Thursday and fifth and sixth. And the Boys Club, we want to do fourth, fifth and sixth, so we can reach the boys early. And the one-on-one is mainly the, well, the Youth Mentor Program started, but we're just not reaching enough kids. We don't have a very many male mentors. Two of our guys have two mentees each. And I'm really trying to get more male mentors, so they can just have one. We were out at the expo and we got a lot of interest, so that was fun. I'm trying real hard to be out and let people know about the Mentor Program. We're doing a stick horse race on Irish days. And like we were saying, the adults are saying, why don't you do it for the adults? Because we're just doing kindergarten first and second. It's like, okay, next year we're gonna have adult stick horse races. So we're doing that. Our yearly fundraiser is coming up, April twenty-second. We'll be at the Elks, and you'll be hearing more and more about that. We'll be on Chamber Chatter next Monday. And I'll be on Community Connections. So it's going well. It's exciting. It's growing fast. And, which is, like I said, a good thing and a little bit scary.
So a couple questions. When I was part of the program a few years ago, they were having trouble getting people's fingerprints. And in that process, has that sped up any, or does it still take months?
It has. There, it used to be with Chad, and now we're with Orchard. Orchard just changed their things up a little bit. One of our last mentors that signed up, we had to come in three times to the jail to get the fingerprints. But it was our jail fault. It wasn't, it wasn't Orchard. They were just sending it someplace else. But we do have that fixed. And so, but it still takes about a month, which, when you have somebody interested and that they want to do this, you want to get them, get them going. And it is a process, because you interview them, interview the kids. Then you, you know, they meet, and then you have to get them with the guardian or parent. So, but yes, that is much better.
Okay, and then my second. You guys, you guys apply for a lot of grant funding, like from all over. I remember like Portland Trail Blazers and different things. How's that working?
It's going well. Last year we did get, every grant we asked for, which is a good thing. We can't go back to Ford this year. And our grants are small. You guys are a big grant for us. We did apply for Silver for two years, and that is a main one for this year, so we'll have fifteen thousand from there. And, but yeah, so you just apply and just hope that you get them. There isn't really, you know, a guarantee until they come in. And so like I said, Ford, we can't go back this year, so I thought, well.
So why can't you go back to Ford?
I think they have, they have us wait a year. So next year we'll be able to. So that's why we thought we would come and ask you guys. And it's needed, because it, you know, we've hired people in Northlake, Holly Vore, and we have people hired in Paisley. And we do have a lot of volunteers, but you still have to have the paid position.
Donna, I really appreciate what you do for Lake County and in the Youth Mentor Program. It's phenomenal, this program, where it's going. You gave us this packet. I noticed in one of the letters of support, one of them is from dated February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and it's from Jack Thompson, Super Ten of SD.
Yeah.
He's no longer the SD Super Ten.
Oh, that's true. I shouldn't have sent that one, because I can get one from Lane. And, but he wanted to send, he wanted to show support before he left. And so, because this came up really fast, and I know there's deadlines, so that's my bad. And I, and I know, and I was like, my love for kids and people and my enthusiasm. But there's, I don't, I mean, doing all the grant stuff is tough. And I get it done, but it's like, it probably takes them twice as long as if somebody knew what they were doing.
I just, I had to, I had to ask, because it was dated just the other day. So, anyway, and he's been out of here for a while.
No, it should, the date that he wrote it?
Says February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Then he, it would have been twenty-two, yeah. So he didn't. I just went there, it's like, oh, these are the letters. So I pulled them up. That's interesting. I'll have to look at that. Thank you.
Anything else? Do you have anything to add?
So you're asking for five thousand from me?
Yeah, yeah.
Me? I'm just here to introduce myself, kind of be supportive and kind of, like I said, introduce myself to you guys. Most of you guys might not know who I am. I'm not from here. I'm actually from northern Minnesota. So a lot of travels. I was a Head Start teacher the last three years. She stole me away from there. So my dad is Jesse Morris. I don't know if you guys know him. The fact, yes, that is my father. So you probably see me a lot of times with him around and stuff like that. But I just figured I'd come introduce myself and all that, see if you guys have any questions for me at all.
And I think the switch is because she had a baby, so she wanted something part-time.
Yep.
And her position is twenty-five hours a week, twenty to twenty-five. So that helps out, yeah, with the, with the new baby.
All right. Well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you for taking the time. Card. Do you guys want a poster? Thank you. And we'll be selling tickets at the Chamber. And then, let me hand this to.
Thank you, Donna.
No, thank you guys.
All right.
Yeah, yes.
Looks like Darwin stepped out. Let's do the North Industrial Water and Sewer Extension. Good?
Okay.
And I'm not sure I have that in front of me, so. Just about to study in my office.
So. So on Friday, Lee Darrell Anderson brought that in to me. And so it's the recommendation on, his recommendation on who to hire as the load leader on that project. And I had Melanie add it, so we can get this done and we can do it full. Thank you Commissioner Shieldburg for all the work on that and everybody that helped. It's gonna be a great project, and we're coming in way lower than we anticipated. That's what takes a huge load off of our shoulders.
So, do we know if we need to, can we vote on this tomorrow? We're good with that?
Okay.
And just so the public knows, the winning bid was Jaren McKernan Enterprises out of Redmond, Oregon. The bid was one million eighty-four thousand seventy-six dollars and ninety cents. There was four bids, and so pretty excited that we have some progress there come spring.
Right.
For water and sewer, north of Lakeview.
Well, you're stuck with that. I'm not, I'm not that.
All right. Okay, let's move on then to the twenty twenty-three order for sale of county properties. Mr. Johnson?
So as standard practice, after the county gets due to us, typically in October, a list of properties that, you know, folks weren't paying their taxes for at least four years. And then there's a two-year kind of redemption process, and then judgment to the county. We then come to you before we have our auction and get you guys to review a list of properties that ought to go on the sale. So in front of you, you should have the summary, which talks about, you know, the total auction price of twenty-two, or sorry, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and change, which is, you know, set at sixty percent the real market value of three hundred and sixty-five thousand and change. There's a number of properties on the list that are in sage grouse habitat that it's always our recommendation for you guys to hold on to if it's in core. Now, there's low, there's a couple that are in low density. Our recommendation is actually to sell those because they're usually on the border where development is still possible. And so, just so that we don't hold on to ones that are probably not all that important to sage grouse. Then my recommendation would be to sell those. And it doesn't mean that they're gonna get developed. It just means that, you know, it's probably not in our best interest to hold on to these for a particular reason. So there are numbers thirty-eight, forty-two and forty-five. They're all in core habitat. Out of the progress that we got this year, only number twenty-nine actually has an address and structures on it. Our recommendation is to sell that property. I was trying to pull up real quickly, remote desktop, and then to the means that you could, let me share a screen. If you want me to pull up anything, if not, I can, I'll grab it on the thumb drive real quick. I can also do it that way.
Okay, whichever.
Do you want, you want to?
Just do the thumb drive.
Thumb drive?
Yeah, let's do it through the thumb drive. It'd be a lot quicker, probably.
Is that, is that screen motion in the back?
No, we have, we're having technical difficulties. Someone used their own this weekend and didn't.
Oh, yeah, they did.
So girl, number twenty-nine is in core?
Huh? Number thirty-eight, no, twenty-nine is not in core. It's, it's right in the town center, so.
That's the one over in Pinion?
Actually, how long do you think this will take?
We, we can, it might take a little bit longer. We can pull back to it.
Yeah, how about we, we pause this topic?
Yeah, that's fine.
I apologize. We have a timed item.
Yeah, that's right, yep.
And we'll go ahead and go to that, if that's all right with you guys, commissioners? So Jonathan Van Rokel, he has here a support request. My apologies, Jonathan.
All right. Commissioners?
Busy schedule of days.
All right. Jonathan Van Rokel, Lake County Resources Initiative, Acting Executive Director, for the record. Thank you for having me.
That, oh. So we have, we have a letter from you asking for some additional funding? You want to maybe get a glimpse of that, talk about it?
Certainly. So request is potentially quite ambitious, as I'm aware. But any support is generously accepted in the county. We find ourselves still in the midst of a transition. However, our programs are in good health. And we continue to look forward to growing our working relationship with the county. And specifically into that, we're looking at twenty-twenty, or excuse me, twenty-two million dollar building upgrade prize allocation at the federal level that we would like to partner with at the county level. These are dollars allocated in two hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollar chunks for clean energy upgrades to infrastructure in our community. And we believe that with Lake County Partnership and SCOWA's town revitalization plan that they proposed, and I believe it was the fall of twenty twenty-two, we have a really good springboard to build off of in that avenue. And so, main focus of those dollars and that action would be to save our downtown infrastructure. So critical infrastructure upgrades, modernization, and potentially even looking to expand the breadth of that work into cleanup and rehabilitation of certain buildings in downtown today. Those dollars could also go to Northlake as well. The second piece there that's core to our working relationship with you all is the CREV, or Community Renewable Energy Program, through Oregon Department of Energy. We're looking at a fall application period for that, around the dollars, and a planning grant to start. In my letter, I mentioned a couple core items or issues that I find sure I could be of assistance towards in that work. Our high school and our hospital are already on geothermal, which positions us very well to add to that current investment with either microgrid technologies such as battery backup, battery and solar backup storage. And really creating resiliency for infrastructure in case of disaster or power outage. We want our community to be able to sustain those periods and stay operational in its critical sense. So we'd be willing to explore other avenues than the hospital and the school. Certainly, I believe the courthouse is critical infrastructure, a fire station is critical infrastructure. All of these options could be considered in a planning grant of a hundred thousand dollars in that fall round.
So Jonathan, a couple things. So last week I found out that Pacific Core is short on transmission power in Lakeview area. With us producing forty-two to forty-six percent of the renewable energy from the state of Oregon. And yet, when we try to build industry in Lakeview, we don't have the power to run them. Speaking with some of our solar folks, they said that they would be glad to put battery backup in our Fort Solar and, I'm in South of town, I can't remember the name of it, Ford?
Yeah.
Is that called Ford?
I think so.
I would be totally interested in that for our local community to receive. The last thing I'm gonna do is produce damn near half of the renewable energy and yet worth one suffering from brownout or black, positive blackouts. You know, we need to get that fixed where we're getting the power before anybody else. Otherwise, you're gonna have some pissed off commissioner, I can tell you that.
Yeah, so.
Another, another thing that I would like to work on too is like rooftop solar for homes throughout the county with battery backups. And I know that's the expensive part. And I know that's the expensive part, uh, but if we're having backup power for our own homes and yet creating power that might possibly go into the grid, I think that is the best-case scenario for all of us. That's just my two cents that I'm throwing out there right now, so.
I, I've shared some things with you about this and I think what to point on Commissioner Alberston, the point that Commissioner Alberston's making is, is a goo, good one. One project alone at Airport Solar produces about seventy megawatts. Yet, we have a business that's looking to go in here and we're told by Pacific Core they can't give us one. One megawatt is like.
Well, they said they could give us two.
Did they actually come back and say two?
As long as it's not peak.
But, you know, you see, you know, the point is that Lake County makes these sacrifices and provides, you know, opportunity for them to put in, you know, these giant pieces of glass on agricultural land or sage land, what have you. And we're producing seventy gigawatts putting it onto the grid and then we can't, we're not afforded, afforded even several. So, this is a big topic. It's beyond the community solar, um, projects that you're talking about and some of the, the energy work that LCRI really focuses on. But, um, that's a good point to make, so.
For all intents and purposes, Brett, I think LCR's mission has shifted drastically from, um, being one that is looking at every and all opportunities for large industrial solar and really focusing in on how we support the county, um, our critical infrastructure and our residents and our producers that live here with their own sustaining power sources, whether that be renewable, terms of solar, geothermal, um, right? There's many opportunities, but in the letter, the two that I'm highlighting now, uh, the CREP program and the buildings up, this is how we start to take the power back into our hands, I believe, uh, with some of these federal and state allocated dollars, and really use those dollars to accomplish what you have come forward, Commissioner.
So, going back to your infrastructure talks. So, we have infrastructure problems in Christmas Valley and the townsite. We have infrastructure problems in the Paisley townsite and Lakeview. What, what is, what's the plans there brought over to LCR's, LCRI's plan?
Yes, sir. So, largely, I think, you know, locally, we, we certainly see the, the need for our downtown ecosystem to receive some funding. But, we don't want to be, um, having that conversation in a closed room and excluding our, our North Lake, uh, communities. And so, I think it largely comes down to us putting our heads together and formulating that plan together in collaboration. Energy Trust will be at the table with that infrastructure money as well. They've offered to be a partner. I've approached SCOEID about being a partner as well, as they were involved with the LCP plan there as well. And so, I think, uh, three to four partners coming together. I would encourage us to look at a partner in North Lake as well. If there's a group up there that would, uh, have more know-how and, um, be able to provide some expertise as to what's going on on the surface and the ground level. I think any and all partnerships in that, in that avenue is good to show for those federal dollars. And, um, there's three rounds. So, March fifteenth is one deadline, right? So, we're coming up on that. I think, um, letters of support would suffice for us to move forward into application period there with Energy Trust. However, there's a third phase. I'd like to get on the date for that that follows in about a couple of months. So, we have some time to play with, um, and I would encourage us all to, to open the door and conversations to North Lake County as well.
Have you had a chance to talk with SCOEID lately?
Yes, sir. I met with them Friday.
Okay. Are you up to speed on what they got, what's available? Are you, is LCRI available for any of their funding?
They are exploring whether or not, um, they internally can leverage ARPA dollars in the, in the plethora of rural development dollars that they've received. I think as a, as a, a nonprofit organization here locally, uh, we should be eligible to, to go after some of the funding that they have access to, but I don't want to guarantee that this time.
Okay, fair. So, you're asking for twenty thousand from the county and that's an increase from normal of fifteen, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And these are the programs that you're hoping to come deeply involved in?
Deeply involved in, yes, sir, and I, I do believe that, um, the county needs a seat at the table when, when, um, looking to, uh, establish the next executive director of the County Resources Initiative. And I, I deeply encourage us to, to come forward and have those conversations now at this time. Now, in that process.
That transition, right? So, we, we, we're finalizing that job description for your position and we'll be putting that out there.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, you just wanna make sure that we're involved with that, in that process also and making sure that our voices are heard too.
And that the, yes, that our, our top two candidates are candidates that are willing to have a good working relationship with the county. Because again, I, we are Lake County Resources Initiative and I'd like to retain that.
Good deal.
Alright, ready to show up, Jonathan?
You're all set. For sure, sir.
Darwin, uh, we're gonna hit another time dive here at ten-thirty. Okay.
Remote desktop, I'm good.
Is everybody doing okay? We've been sitting here an hour and a half. This next topic might take a little bit of time, so we need to take a one thing break or are we good?
I'm okay.
You okay? Alright. So, next up is Alan Parks and we're discussing, um, the Poplar Ranch Corner. We didn't really have a name for it and that works?
Yeah, kind of does.
Okay, so, if you don't mind, come on up, Alan. Uh, this is on Fort Rock Highway. We had a bit of a discussion about this in our, one of our January meetings in, uh, in Christmas Valley. Mr. Parks brought it up in a public comment about the guardrail needing repaired on the corner that we're referencing. Since then, we've looked up a lot of history on, uh, that corner and, and the background and whatnot. Also, uh, Mr. Hawk has, uh, had the, uh, all of our corners engineered. Thank you. By Anderson Engineering to determine what is the need for many of our ninety-three corners in Lake County. And, uh, signing came back as the, uh, the need. In nineteen eighty-eight, I'm talking off the cuff now, but in nineteen eighty-eight, it was, uh, discussed by then, um, road manager Roy Kerr, to do a land swap with Mr. Parks, uh, so that we could have a round curve instead of a stop sign corner, uh, on the Poplar property. The interesting part of this was is that there's an irrigation well on the outside or right next to the corner. So, a land exchange was done, uh, so they could, uh, do the corner. Mr. Parks kept his well, obviously, and there's a little chunk of private in there, uh, on the inside corner, which equals what? Point zero-three-eight acres or something like that, very small piece.
Yeah, I haven't seen a map yet.
Yeah. And in nineteen ninety-five.
I mean, the legal of that.
Uh, commissioners then, O'Leary, Bardou, and O'Keefe, uh, voted two to one to add a barricade, uh, to complete barricade around the corner to protect, uh, Mr. Parks as well. Since then, uh, there's been multiple, uh, cars who have tested the guardrail and, uh, some have won, some have lost, uh, but there is damage to both ends of the guardrail at this time. It's been, also been determined that the guardrail is, uh, no longer in current compliance or up to current standard, uh, for guardrail standards. And, uh, there's a cost associated with repairing or replacing, uh, the guardrail versus, uh, going with a signing plan and, uh, potentially doing barricades next to the well. So, hopefully I've given a, a brief overview of, of the topic so that people are kind of up to speed. Is, are you guys up to speed, commissioners then? Alright, so, uh, Mr. Parks, uh, I'll let you take it away and, uh, and, uh, let you begin discussion.
Okay, um, I'm Alan Parks from Fort Rock, Poplar Ranch. And, um, do you want to invite Kevin to be a part of this also or?
Uh, we can invite him up when needed, if that, if that's right.
You're talking about land swap. There wasn't a land swap. It was donating right-of-way to the county.
Donating.
And, um, at the time, we discussed the hazard, okay? And, uh, you guys are all familiar with that discussion as, as I brought it out and as it shows up in the, um, nineteen ninety-five letter to the county commissioners, okay? So, the barricades were discussed and deemed to be, um, dangerous and, and a serious liability. If someone went off the road and hit a immovable object and was killed, then whoever participated in the, in that barricade was definitely at risk as far as being sued for a pile of metal. So, it was determined that the guardrail is basically the only choice. At the time we discussed this in eighty-eight, I, I told Roy I'd rather see the, the road be further out toward the center of that field so that there would be a distance between, between the, the curve and the, and the pump. And, and Roy indicated that he, he really wanted all the corners to be equal as we go from Fort Rock to Christmas Valley, that the corners are equal. And presumably, that would make people realize that, um, you go around one at that speed, you're good on the others. Well, they seem to forget from one corner to the next what, what, what safety factor is. So, so initially, our access into that field was right across that corner. And as you can see on the map, the driveway isn't right off the corner. It, what would it be? Hundred feet east of the property corner. And so, then that came across, straight across the old county road and then into the field. But as, as the, the new road was put in, then our access was just about exactly halfway around that corner. And so, you couldn't have a, you couldn't have a cutout there for access. You know, you can't take a section out of the middle of the guardrail and think that's safe. So, anyway, um, only half the guardrail was done. Then in ninety-five, um, an uninsured fellow from Christmas Valley ran off the corner going east or west or northbound, whichever, and, um, did damage to the, to the, um, pump control panel and the motor. And, and at that point, um, I requested that the guardrail be finished and, and, um, Ruin Master Callahan declined. I appealed to the county commission and it was, and then it was approved. And, um, you've got copies of the details on that. Okay, but from the, from the beginning, when the agreement was made to, um, provide that right-of-way and adjust that corner, then from the beginning, it was noted that there had to be protection for the pump. And the right-of-way is forever and adds to the protection for it. And, um, so, there's been concern that things aren't up to date. I, I talked to, uh, probably real contractors about that and in fact, Mark Corbin and shared pictures with them and so on. And they said that they and others, well, they repair guardrails on a regular basis. Normally, the payment is made by the insurance companies that are involved with whoever made the mistake. And insurance companies don't pay for upgrades. And so, typically, around the state, repairs are done to original condition. And, and they, they do that regularly. I've provided a, a letter from contractor indicating how that, how that is and which, as I understand it, is the, the standard of the industry.
So, so they're saying they repair a guardrail all the time, even though it's not up to standard? And it's up to whoever owns the guardrail to take on the potential liability if that guard, substandard guardrail causes injury or harm to a person?
Well, I, what I think you're saying is that if there's an accident and a, an old guardrail is involved, then you're saying that the entity that owns the guardrail would be responsible. And I don't, I don't think that's correct, um, that guardrails are, are hit daily somewhere around the state. And, and I'm, I'm no expert, but I don't believe there's a lot of litigation against the, um, the county or the state or the, or the, um, federal highway system because of a, a guardrail unless there's a glaring problem. So, um, so we talked about that. But I get back to the basics that the, the commitment to guard the, the pump is significant and, and, and again, forever. So, I don't see the, the plastic barrels as being a good alternative. I hadn't seen the, the exact amount or, you know, the, the property line specifically there. But the elevation difference between the, the outside of the corner and, and that pump is significant. I think if you take a level from the, from the grade on the outside of the corner to the very top of the pump motor, it'd be, it'd be kind of level. And, and, um, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me that that's a really good answer. I was, possibly I didn't understand what you were saying, but I was offended when I, my understanding of that discussion was, you said those are good for about ten years and after that, it'd be on my property and be my responsibility. And, and so, that doesn't work. You know, the, if you wanna put the road back the way it used to be, that'll work. It's not, not a good choice, I don't believe, but, um, It's not a good choice, I don't believe. But there's, you know, sand barrels aren't a good long-term fix. The guardrail itself, as awful as it may be, has proven to be, in that case, it's worked. You know, the crashed dummy and the stolen Honda walked away from it. And it's fairly obvious that he was going at a significant rate of speed, you know, on course of trip. If you dip the crashed dummy in alcohol before they hit, well, they survive better. But anyway, the only thing that I haven't presented earlier is a letter from the electric co-op as well, that they're concerned that if the guardrail goes away, the transformer pole bank is at risk. And that, as he says, that'll cut off power to a significant, you know, three hundred and thirty customers and be expensive. So again, I feel like I have it on good authority that that guardrail can be repaired and without any significant liability. And that's the best, the best low-cost correction, excuse me, correction. The, just doing away with all that and having reflectors isn't a good long-term answer. And of course, replacing the guardrail with reflectors doesn't avoid a lot of liability, I don't think. But anyhow, this accident happened fourteen months ago. And during that time, there's nothing done toward putting reflectors or warnings up. The arrow at the end of the guardrail was destroyed or wiped out, you know, and it was in the pile of trash there until it went away at some point.
Okay, so what was done though, was an engineering study to figure out what is the correct answer. And I know that doesn't look like anything physical out on the ground, but it took some time for that to be done and to come up with a correct plan for all our ninety-degree curves in Lake County, including yours. So that's what was done in the meantime. Yeah, the reflection on those corners, you know, they are sun-faded and, you know, it's ready to have some action done there with signage. Signage will happen, whether we, no matter what we do with the guardrail, I think it'll totally improve speeds on that corner.
I agree. And having, you know, having signs there with the guardrail will be excellent, you know, for another probably fifteen years. Eventually, the reflective ability of that stuff goes away. And if you go by that corner in the evening, headed toward Fort Rock, you can't see the second reflector. The first one's missing, can't see the second one. The third one has got some reflective ability.
That would totally change, yeah.
Okay, but.
So here's the deal, you know, we had to set commissioners make an agreement in nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen ninety-five, and now fast forward to twenty-three, and we've got screwed-up guardrail on both ends. It's going to cost the county money to fix it. And we could no more than fix it and it could get hit again. And I, you know, we just keep pumping money into the guardrail. And it's a question too of, you know, we don't think the guardrail is even legal. It sits too low, you know, it could turn as a launch versus guide you back into the road system. You know, there's lots of issues there. Do I want to protect a well for agricultural purposes? And heck yeah, you know, I'm an agriculture person, I recognize the need to do that and I, you know, my conscience says, yeah, let's protect it. But how much money do we spend from our taxpayers to protect a piece of property? And then do we get hit up next month from somebody else that says, you protected Mr. Parks's piece of property, now you need to protect mine? That's kind of where I'm just at with the guardrail thing.
Yeah, and.
I've made a decision, but, you know.
I understand what you're saying.
We're putting the county and the taxpayers in a tough spot, forever and ever.
But what you're saying, or that an agreement made is only as good as till the next meeting?
The agreement, the notes don't say forever and ever. It says a barricade. Doesn't even say a guardrail. You know, so, you know, we currently have a guardrail, that's what we're talking about. We've offered you barricades, the barrel system, which is, ODOT uses it, you know, whether you think it works or not, you know, I don't know what to say. Like, I see now mid-state's concern, that's a factor you need to take into consideration. But just trying to figure out a long-term solution here, because we could no more than fix it and it could get hit again. And now we're at another fifteen thousand, or whatever it costs to fix it, you know. And those are, that's a concern. Plus fixing a guardrail that's too short and, you know, may cause legal problems down the road. That's all the things that we're trying to weigh, that I'm trying to weigh anyway. Can't speak for the other two commissioners, but.
The right of way was not granted until the guardrail wore out. The, the, the offer, the acceptance, the agreement is, that was a major part of the agreement, okay? And there's no doubt that if that agreement hadn't been made at the time the right of way was changed, then we wouldn't have signed on that. It wouldn't be there, that wouldn't be a problem. Okay, so I, I'm just having a problem with the fact that the, as I've said in my notes and such, that, you know, the right of way is basically forever.
And the county should protect your well forever.
Correct. And I don't see where that's a hard concept.
Commissioners, do you got any other questions?
My question would be to Kevin Hong. So yesterday, I was coming back from Christmas Valley, and one of the corners on the state highway, they use those concrete, I don't know the proper.
Like barricades?
Jersey barriers? Yeah, they're hooked together, they come in sections. What if, this is just talking out, thinking out loud, you know how you're building up that corner, the shoulder part of it, right? You're talking about that.
Behind it, yeah.
Right. What if we take the guardrail out and on the edge of where you built that up, we put those concrete around that? Would that work? Would we still have the same liability? I guess Paige can get involved on that part, but.
I just wonder about the concrete barrier itself being a fixed object that would create damage in the future.
But they use them for guardrails on the state highway, and so that's why.
Like in, where you're talking about was at like an off-ramp or something like that?
No, it's on, it's on the way, it's up in Summer Lake. About halfway up Summer Lake, they have a part of a regular guardrail. It was the end cap of it was a regular guardrail. And then they had the concrete around a corner and then the other end was.
You're talking about Picture Rock Pass?
Yeah. I'm not positive where I seen.
That sounds like it's Picture Rock Pass.
And so it's on the state highway and they use it for a guardrail, but it's set off. It's not like Allen's is, the guardrail's right along the side of this highway. This is set off probably three or four feet and then it goes around the corner. And if we did something like that, we're still protecting Allen's asset and we're still.
It seems like if you went three or four feet off the road on that corner, and most corners in Lake County, you'd be off on the, off the curve.
Well, he would have to build it up, what I'm saying, and which he's doing somewhat right now. It would be at this, where the pitch of the road is, that would be leveled. And so, and then you'd have the concrete going all the way around it. But you'd have three or four feet past the high part of the curve out.
So most of those that I've seen, Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, they still have the, something to absorb the hit on the ends.
This one had a, some sort of end treatment, right?
Yeah, and see, that's where I'm at, where I don't feel like, sorry Kevin, I'm just, the difference between the one on Picture Rock Pass and the corner in which we are discussing today, my brother was one of the guys who actually put in some of those barricades on Picture Rock, is it's continuous and you're in a corner actually already. The difference on this corner is that there's an entry point on each one of those corners as you go into the actual curve. So whatever you put there, you're either blocking that road completely off to where you actually have a glance hit, or you're creating a hit fixed object again, no matter what you do.
Well, the thing is, is Allen can move his driveway down.
And I just wonder about, I just wonder about for the Jersey barriers, there's a lot to do on this corner and on all these corners to think about where the trajectory of, the trajectory of traffic coming into and out of. So we just have to look and see if it was an option. The, I wish I could find in black and white somewhere what the barricade thought was or the barricade theory was back in eighty-eight or maybe that was in ninety-five.
Well, there was no, there was no studies that went along with that.
Well, that's, that's a lot of the trouble with the guardrail that's there now is there, and I realize that contractors have said, whatever they said, but the reality is that the county is going to be liable for whatever we would construct there. And I am not, I struggle with using road dollars to add to something that we already know is not structurally sufficient. And while it may stop traffic, or in the cases that it has successfully, it can also create an issue by not being up to a standard. The most recent guide rail damages that we've encountered in the years since I've worked here, when they're hit and they don't meet a standard, we upgrade them because that's what we ought to be doing. We should be making them to the standard so that when they're struck again, most of them are protecting the bridge or a slope or something like that, that they're, the practical application of them is successful, not a question as to whether it's going to make a vehicle come off the ground potentially because it's too low, or shoot it into the other lane and create a head-on collision. So the Jersey barrier thing, we can look into, but I wonder about it in these specific cases, being ninety-degree corners because of the trajectory of it. And it would still have to have properly engineered, still have to have some kind of cushion, crash cushion, or what they call crash attenuation on each end, so that nobody could hit a fixed hard object. Yep. Even the structure that's there now, the guardrail system that's there now, I believe is, it never was designed or never was put into a standard because there is no end treatments. There's no, there's no end treatment at all. So the rail that's there can impale a vehicle. Has it? Well, luckily not, but.
I'm just throwing out things, I mean.
And so your theory is to put it on the, what would be the limits of the right of way? And I, and I still wonder if that's an object in there that can, you know, we're asking for somebody to hit. You know, stop them for sure.
Yeah, but what if, what if Allen moves his entrance into the.
So the, so in this drawing, this came from Dave Knowles, he printed it out for me here the other day, and the red line shows.
You got that one?
The red line shows, do you want my copy?
No.
The actual property line and the subject private property. The yellow shows, which it's off on the west side of that a little bit because it's a Google Earth print, but roughly where the county deeded right of way is. So those accesses actually are county. They aren't, those aren't private access on each side, those are county right of way because the, because the, after the radius was built, the right of way never, and I have a document somewhere, I believe it was your mom and dad that signed off on the actual right of way when it was a ninety-degree corner, somewhere in this file.
So if we moved those access points and made the ends, sorry, I don't know the logo, lingo, but the ends of it were there, not a fixed object or whatever you call it, would that work?
And with your Jersey barrier theory or with?
With the Jersey barrier.
I think in that case, I'd, I'm not comfortable enough to say that it would or it wouldn't. I think, I think if that was something that we wanted to entertain, we'd have to have us, you know, an engineer sign off on it. Because I, in today's day and age of liability, I wouldn't be comfortable in making that decision.
So let's take it that step. If we had it engineered and they engineered it and said, we're good to go, would everybody be happy with it?
Well, currently it's been engineered and requires no repair.
That's why we, that's why we, it took a little while and we actually studied the route as a whole, the corridor as a whole, because as Allen said, all these corners were wanting to be designed the same. So for the safety improvement of the hole was to consider upgrading all the signs and the warning signal prior to all these corners.
And I agree with that a hundred percent. I think that needs to be done, but this corner, the grade would be the same, the signage would be the same, it would just have those Jersey barriers on it, four or five feet away from.
Do we have any idea what Jersey barriers cost?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I wasn't prepared for.
Sorry, buddy.
That's okay. I wish I could give you the answer on the spot, I just don't have it, so I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to swing at it and be.
Right, you got a question there?
So what does it cost?
Please state your name for the rig.
James Evans, Lake County Road Advisory, sitting in for Tom O'Larry, who's going to try to be here this morning, but he couldn't, under the same circumstances. So the long and the short of it, a former Lake County road boss and a Lake County engineer put the county in jeopardy by what they did here. So to alleviate this for the future, what's it cost to move the well?
You're looking at a couple hundred thousand.
No, no. Parks looked at it, didn't you say about forty-five?
Well, by the time you redo the piping and the electric and so on, it'd be all fifty.
So, so you're not drilling a new well, you're just doing a different pumping system out of the same one?
No. No, that's a well.
I don't, I don't. If you can get a well drilled for fifty thousand, have at it.
Well, you'd be reusing the same pump and all of that, so it'd just be the hole that would be the cost.
The, that well is, is less than two hundred feet. And, and Tom Searst said it'd be.
It's very good water there.
Yeah, it's excellent water and so there's every reason to think that it'd be in two hundred feet and, and let me say two hundred bucks a foot, be forty grand. Then tend to do the other things. It may well run a little over that, but, but it isn't two hundred thousand, it isn't.
Okay, so tell me this Alan, so if we agreed to drill you a well close by, two hundred feet and it's a dry hole, then. I mean, I'm fine drilling a well, I'd be personally fine because I think we'd be money ahead doing it. The problem is, is that if the well's fine and then two years from now it goes dry, I don't wanna hear another beep. That's, that's how I am right now with a baby. And so, I mean, I wanna, I wanna help you and I wanna get this settled. I wanna, I want the county to be not liable anymore. And I wanna help you out, but I would want some kind of agreement that if we drilled another well, this is done, no matter what. And we pay forty grand, because I think we'd be money ahead then putting all the other crap in there.
So to go back to James, just part of his question where there was an engineer that suggested this, there, there actually wasn't in all of the research and drawings.
It was the commissioners and the road boss.
There's no.
It wasn't an engineer.
So that corner was never engineered?
Yes, it was, but none of them were recommended to have guide rail, guardrail on any of them. They're all.
The guardrail itself was not an engineered part or?
That's part of the problem.
That was, that was managed however, in an effort to protect the, protect this well. And so the perpetual maintenance and road to render it down, the perpetual maintenance and endless road budget use to protect private asset is where the quandary is here.
And there's no doubt in my mind, speak, putting the well aside, if somebody hits that home, them living in from it, I'm thinking of loss of life too. I mean, the odds they're gonna walk away aren't very good. And so I don't want somebody running off that road, whether they're drunk or not, and freaking hitting something and dying. And so the previous board, the previous road master has put this in a quandary. They did make an agreement with Alan. I don't think it's legally binding for perpetually, but perpetually, but on the other hand, I wanna, I wanna do something that my own conscience agree, my own conscience agrees with and so far, nothing's made that happen. Go ahead, Kevin.
So, so that's why when we discussed about what actually was in black and white in the discussion, talking points in these past meetings about one commissioner saying, I still don't think it's county's responsibility, the other two saying that, yes, we're talking about a barricade. That's why when we went and discussed with Alan the option of the crash barrels because while it's not something that suits him, it, it, it settles all of our concerns where we're not having perpetual maintenance of a guardrail system. That's not necessary if the pump weren't there, if the pump weren't a talking point. None of these other corners are designed with them. And it does meet the concern that he has of a passed agreement for a barricade. And there is enough room to have them be on his private property, that's the section that is still private property.
Okay. I wanna throw some things out here, listened to quite a bit on this, I appreciate the input, but you know, Alan, you've made several comments in the meetings where you've said, an agreement is only as good until the next meeting. You've kind of made that.
This is the first time I've said that, but yes.
No, no, you actually said that in the last meeting in Christmas Valley. But the, the thing I would respond to that though, what I would respond to that is you're, you're somewhat right, you're somewhat correct. Because there's nothing actually in writing other than a decision made by a previous board that did not bind us in a contract, did not have an end date, did not say that we were liable to keep, continue going forward to protect a private asset that is outside of the right-of-way. And I'm very reluctant to put any future board commissioners in the exact same situation today. So when you go, you know, as James pointed out, putting the county in a financial jeopardy, I would disagree to a certain extent because I'm not entirely sure the counties actually should be responsible for continuing to expend dollars to protect a private asset that is outside of the county right-of-way. So you, like the utilities, for example, I appreciate Jim Anderson's letter highlighting the potential risk of having that utility put in, in harm's way. But again, you know, utilities that develop within county right-of-way, which that pole is not within the county right-of-way, if they were to develop within the county right-of-way, they're still liable. They're still responsible for maintaining their equipment. And if it gets struck or hit, which they do all the time, that is on them. This is outside of the county right-of-way and yet it's being put on us. Or at least somewhat insinuated. I'll make the response, go ahead.
Yeah, the realignment of the road put that pole in, in harm's way, just like the pump. Because before that, the, the pole and the pump were on the inside of the corner and, and it takes some acrobatic driving to, to come off the corner and, you know, and veer off on the wrong side of it to, to hit either the pole or the pump. So it's, you know, that, that jeopardy issue is, it's, you know, is also just a result of the, the new route of.
So that pole was there in nineteen ninety-five?
The pole was there in nineteen fifty-five.
And so the pole, but yet this is the first time the company has come to us with any concern about any potential risk to their asset that they say is now in jeopardy?
Well, because there was a guardrail there and prior to.
Hasn't always been there.
And prior to the road being changed, it, it wasn't in any more jeopardy than any other power pole along the road, on, on the, on the.
Yeah, I mean, in jeopardy or not, by statute, the utility companies use our right-of-ways and they're, and they're always placed by permit at the absolute limits of that because they don't want to pay private landowners for the use of a piece of ground to put a pole on, so they use our right-of-way. They're all on the right-of-way.
And they don't have to pay any per, permits.
They don't pay any, they don't pay anything by statute. They are allowed to utilize, that's a statute, they're allowed to utilize the right-of-way. With inherent risks to their own maintenance.
Do you have more, do you have further?
Yeah, I did have one other thing, just to go back on some of the comments that were made about like the cement barriers, if those were to be placed in or anything like that. Personally, I'm not comfortable with anything being placed within the county right-of-way. I, you know, if we're, if we're not talking about a guardrail anymore and we're wanting to do something else, it needs to be moved outside of the county right-of-way. If we're talking about the barrels, they shouldn't be in their county right-of-way. They need to be moved outside of it. Because again, this is about protecting the private asset that is outside of the county right-of-way. I understand the history of which, you know, I, you know, early on during your testimony, you stated that you didn't like the term swap, the, the swap of the actual land for that right-of-way. I think where I'm not gonna state this is where the whole county, how the county sees it, but I think what Commissioner Schulenberger was, why he was using that term is because the right-of-way itself was moved. There's always been a road at that corner. It changed its trajectory slightly and its placement, but the right-of-way itself moved. And so I think that's where that term swap came from. But, but you, you view it as an actual donation of land.
Yeah, because they didn't swap one.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just wanting to clarify that, is it how, that's how you see it?
Okay, in nineteen eighty-eight, there were three different landowners on that corner.
Correct.
Okay, and so the discussion included that the old right-of-way needed to be maintained for all, all players to still have access to their property. And, and that access is by the old road. If the old road wasn't plowed out or hauled away, it's, it's just coming off the corners of the new road. So there was no swap. I didn't, we didn't gain ownership of the old right-of-way. It was, it was donating additional property. Okay, so that isn't a swap.
Okay. Yep, no, I, I appreciate that and that's kind of what I'm looking for is just clarification on that.
But, but again, when we talked about the, the whole process, you know, the, my position was, you know, move away from the well or protect the well. And, and the county's position was to maintain equal corners and therefore that would require protecting the well. And, and then, I guess your attorney's on the screen there too. The, the agreement related to a right-of-way, again, I, it's, it's my position, it should, it, it should be in force as long as the right-of-way exists. And, you know, not that we'll put a guardrail up there and then, you know, if it gets hurt, we're gonna take it out. You know, that isn't, that isn't maintaining the responsibility to protect the, the asset that's in place.
There is no written contract that says that we are responsible for protecting that private asset that is in place, that is outside of the county right-of-way. And this board, as well as any other board, still maintains the discretion to make that decision on whether or not they expend taxpayer dollars or road dollars to protect a private asset that is off and outside of the county right-of-way. And the previous board had, would have no right to make that kind of an obligation on us. And they weren't even in full agreement. That's, that's where I'm, I'm at. And if there's going to be any kind of structure put in place currently, what I'm thinking, you know, I'm, I'm not comfortable at this point in time with anything else being placed within the county right-of-way.
Okay, so I just keep looking over my shoulder page because we only have one TV today, so I don't know whether you got your hand up or not. Is there anything you wanna add at this point? Or is there any factual thing that we're maybe missing or would you like to pass at this time?
Oh, I actually don't have anything to contribute in, 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 in this meeting. I think you've, you've covered the issues as, as, you know, we've, we've discussed them.
Okay. So then I'd like to ask Kevin's. We've heard about potentially repairing the current guardrail. We've heard about drilling the new well. We've heard about concrete, what do we call those?
Jersey barriers.
Jersey barriers. Is there anything we're missing here in what, we know that we're going to add signage that will have arrows for both directions and lots of reflectors. We know that's coming, that's gonna happen regardless. That will really highlight the corner and the need to slow down. Is there anything, is there any other option? Is there any other thing out there that we haven't talked about or, or maybe what is your recommendation?
Well, that's, that's, that's how actually the, the crash cushion barrels came to life because in trying, in trying to go back and review what was binding and what wasn't and what could be and what isn't, that, you know, we, we had an engineer say that this isn't necessary for the, for the, the speed and the, and the corridor. It's not designed on any other corner, we don't have that anywhere else. So it is only just to protect private asset. And in keeping consideration of the barricade discussion in past meetings, which was Alan's, one of his sticking points, that's where the crash cushion barrels came in because they could be placed on his private land in an effort to protect the well. So these barrels are just like you see on the interstate. I think I've, may have given you guys, although one, you and I went to talk to Alan, I didn't have them in front of me.
Yeah, and basically to shorten that conversation, you know, it's about eight barrels that would be on each side. The first barrel only has about four hundred pounds of sand in it and then it progressively gets more and more. Where the last barrel has about two thousand pounds worth of sand.
Correct.
And you place it fairly close to where you're trying to protect. And it would have to be set up to where it could, whether the traffic was coming from the north or from the east, right?
Correct, and they're made, they are made for deflection. I mean, they are, they are a big, large opposite object that's orange and bright and could be added with reflectivity or whatever to deflect away from this well, which ultimately is Alan's concern.
But it's not your recommendation to repair the current guardrail?
I struggle with repairing what's there because I, I can't see where we should put money into something that is deficient. So if it is the board's decision to manage the guardrail in perpetuity, then we need to have it be the standard that it needs to be with crash-worthy end treatments so that if somebody does hit the end of it, they don't become entailed or they don't. It needs to meet current standards, just like we have been doing with the rest of our projects.
And to meet current standards, we're, then we're talking about what it would cost approximately to drill a well. Somewhere in that neighborhood, fifty thousand dollars.
Plus, minus, yeah, I mean, I can, I can put out for, request for a proposal and get three fixed quotes and provide that to you guys.
Mr. Evans has a question.
So Kevin, have we ever received any insurance money from that?
So, so.
Getting that guardrail?
So in twenty nineteen, we had a structure hit in Plush and that took about a year. In twenty twenty, we had a structure, the end of, hit in, on Pitcher Lane and in Paisley and we still have not, we still have not.
But the specific guardrail, have we ever received?
Was it insured?
Uninsured, a lot of times, to be quite honest, we don't get the, we don't get the information on the crash report. And it, it, it literally, it literally gets lost. So to go recovering from a, it's not there, the dollars aren't there to recover it.
So the only one that I'm, excuse me, sorry Kevin, the only crash incident that we've had in the last four years that we've actually received some insurance compensation on was the one in Plush.
Twenty nineteen.
And did that actually cover the entire cost?
It was fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand out of what was the actual cost? Ninety to a hundred thousand dollars worth of damage.
Yeah, because, because it's, because it's, it's the dollars that are available through the insurance claim are the terminology, the insurance terminology.
It's the minimum.
Insurance, it's the minimum, yeah, it'd be the minimum, what they have, what they legally would have to have by law. Whatever that terminology is, maybe you, maybe you know what I'm talking about.
It's just the minimal required.
That's, that's what.
Which is like twenty-five thousand and it's supposed to pay for everything.
Paige, go ahead.
Uh, I would like to speak to the issue about replacing the, the current guardrail. It's my understanding in my discussions with Mr. Prahock and what I'm hearing here.
that the current guard rail, regardless of the damage, is not compliant with industry standard. And that's why, why it needs to be replaced. And my position is, is that's fixing a guard rail that you know to be substandard is probably the worst thing you can do here in terms of exposure for the county. Contrary to Mr. Parks's statement, I, as you know, I represent almost exclusively municipal entities. And they get sued once a day and twice on Sunday day if there's an accident that results in deaths or life-altering injuries. The first thing plaintiff's counsel will do is send out somebody to do an inspection and request all of the road records available in an effort to find some defect in the road's construction, in the road's maintenance, in signage, in barriers. Some, some shortcoming on the part of the municipality that can then give rise to yet another defendant that they can bring into court and another insurance company. So, yeah, we get sued all of the time. And the worst thing that we can do is repair something, put a Band-Aid on something that we know and that your, your own road master has expressed to you is, is not compliant with industry standard. I, I just think that's, the exposure for that is, is enormous. And I don't recommend that as, as an alternative.
That's, you know, I mean, what you're saying makes some sense. Been talking to the contractors that say they do this as, you know, perhaps fifty percent of their business. And the, the president of the company is, has, he's owned that company, I believe, for forty years. His whole career has been in that, in that business. And he said that guardrails get torn out, as you say, daily. And, and nobody has the money or the interest in, in rebuilding to new condition that insurance companies shy away from betterment at every opportunity. And we all know that. And so that, what I understand is that the, the standard in the industry is whether the guard rail is, is, is up to today's standards. What actually happens is putting it back to original condition. I, I asked the contractor about the heights of the guard rail. And they said, basically, you pick it up, you pull the posts up with a chain, you tamp underneath them, and, and that gets them cut up where they were. I believe it's kind of a standard length post that is attached to the majority of these guardrails. And that it can be raised and tamped and, and, and put back into the proper place. You know, your crew straightened it two, three years ago, and it wasn't long until it got hit again. And now it's still bent over, but, you know, they have been straightened. I stopped on Horseshoe and Shilla yesterday and measured that the guardrails are there at twenty-four to twenty-seven inches to the top. And I, I think the new standard is thirty-one. But anyhow, you can measure them all over the state and they're not, they're not bad. Anyway, I guess one of the things, do we look for precedent of how these work out in court? I don't, I don't know. But the, I looked at the the YouTube videos of, of the sand barrels. And I believe they certainly can save a life. They don't necessarily save the pump. They kind of show a forty-two mile an hour hit with either a, a mid-sized car or a, a half-ton pickup. And stuff flies everywhere. And it's, again, I, I think it, you know, it would be effective in, in saving a life, but I don't think it would do much good for being able to turn that pump back on.
We're trying to make a decision today, or not necessarily today, but here soon, because we need to give Kevin direction on what we want to do.
I would ask if, if you're not willing to do this, if you postpone your final decision until after the Road Advisory Committee, which is on Thursday. And I guess on that subject, we, we stood there on that, on that corner. And, and I thought we had an agreement that we were going to wait until, until we talked about it again anyway. And next thing I know, there's a grader coming and a couple dump trucks and starting to be that fill on the outside. And it's, it's my opinion, and I think I'm correct, that if you just repair the guard rail, that, that extra fill material wasn't necessary.
The point of the fill material again is to, if somebody does leave the, leave the corner, that they don't become airborne. And that it gives a better chance that the wheels stay on the ground. And a road manager determined that that has too much sink and too much fall off. He needed it to be done anyway. It was, it needs done in other corners.
Even with the guard rail.
Even with the guard rail. So. Am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, yes, I guess I'm
Go ahead, Paige. Did you have your hand up?
Uh, just following up with the issue on repairing the guard rail. I mean, I, I understand where Mr. Parks is coming from, but I don't put a lot of confidence in this letter from the contractor. I mean, not to put you too fine a point on it, he doesn't have any skin in this game in terms of living with the consequences of this decision. And I, I, with regard to what insurance companies will, will pay and whether that equates to the, the county's responsibility and liability, that's apples and oranges. The insurance companies are, are not obligated to upgrade or, nor are they responsible for the functionality of, of the guard rail. So, yeah, they're going to, they're going to pay just enough to get it to the previous state. Because if the previous state is inadequate, they don't live with the consequence of that. I, I just can't over, overstate that, that particular, particular risk. And I, you know, I'm, I'm not, I don't, I don't find that the statement from the contractor very compelling in, or, or for that matter, very appealing to me in terms of who will ultimately be responsible for the consequences of that decision if it goes sideways.
Okay, I understand what you're saying there. Do you have an opinion on the the responsibility of the agreement to the right of way? Is there, is that a, a short-term responsibility or, or a long-term responsibility?
Well, commissioners, would you like me to, I've provided you with my confidential opinion on that. Attorney client privilege. I'd be happy to answer it if you'd like me to, or but that's, you have to, I need your input as to whether you'd like me to address that.
Well, don't bother. I mean, that's apparently that's out of my reach.
Go ahead, it's up to you guys on that one.
I have no problem. I have no problem either. I don't, I don't think it's anything. I know what you're going to say, so, and I don't feel it.
Okay.
I think it needs to be said, so go ahead.
Okay, okay. I, I don't believe there is an agreement. Everything that I have reviewed in terms of documentation doesn't lend itself to any belief that there was some kind of quid protocol, especially not a perpetuity, an obligation on the part of the county in perpetuity. I reviewed the deed for the transfer of the property, which presumably if the quid pro quo for the transfer of the property was installation of a guard rail in perpetuity or some kind of traffic control device, that would have been listed in the deed as a binding obligation on the part of the county. Going forward, there is no such language. I reviewed the engineering diagram for the construction of the corner. It does not include any elements, any location, any mention of any traffic control devices, any guard rail placement where that should be in the construction of the roadway. My belief would be, the argument can be raised that if in fact the transfer of the property was in, in exchange for installation of the guard rail, that would have been done when the corner was built in nineteen eighty-eight. And in, in completion and not piecemeal as was done. And I think that that's reflected in the commissioner's minutes in nineteen ninety-five indicating that they, there's no language in those minutes that would indicate that they felt that they were legally obligated by any binding agreement with, with the, the property owner to install a guard rail in particular. At, at best, they may have indicated, they indicated that they would agree to install a barricade. It can be argued whether they, they did so out of gratuitously, or, you know, as, as a courtesy. Or whether they did so, whether they felt any obligation, and I certainly don't see any language in there that would indicate that they felt bound to do so. In fact, the language is somewhat vague as to what they felt their obligations would be. So, I, I mean, I, I don't know that there is a legally binding agreement in place, at least with the evidence that I have, I have been presented. And typically agreements that require one party to do something with regard to another party's real estate, their real property need, need to be in writing and on, to, and should be recorded if they're going to be a binding obligation in, in perpetuity. So I'm not convinced that there is agreement to begin with. Now, I don't know that that is, that addresses the issue of the, you know, how, how to resolve this particular question. But that's been my advice to my clients is I don't believe that there is a legal obligation to, to to install the guard rail or replace it. Or for that matter, to put in any, any barricade.
Yeah. So just back to the thing that a handshake agreement doesn't, doesn't work anymore. And, you know, I mean, that was a long time ago and, and certainly made sense at the time. But I guess we keep this can for now.
I, I have several questions. You brought, again, you bring up the handshake agreement, Alan, which I, I do respect. And, and I think that a handshake agreement should be absolutely respected as such. Have you ever shaken a handshake with any of the current board of commissioners on this particular issue that you feel is an obligation for us to replace that guard rail?
No, there's been no
So you've never shaken hands with any of the current board? Because in nineteen eighty-eight, I'll just say, I wasn't even a year old. So you didn't shake my hand. Okay. So my other question is this, how long have you known Tim Wimsit?
About three weeks.
And, but he's perfectly fine with donating the materials for this guard rail? And
Well, he's saying
No price tag.
Correct. His, his thing was, this is no big deal. We'll take, take two joints of, of guard rail out of their, their pile of things they've taken out here and there. And, and an end piece and yet, when I was there talking to him, he said, you know, are you driving a pickup? We'll, we'll throw those in the bag.
Okay. So my understanding of, with, from this letter, I'm just asking this for the record. Okay, I don't mean to get into the weeds. I just have a few questions on this. There's no price associated with this letter of what he's willing to donate other than his understanding that it would only be a few pieces of guard rail, basically. And that's his view and his perspective and, and his writing, basically, that that, that would be all that would be needed to replace this guard rail.
And, and a few hours of
The labor, but he was willing, and he was willing to donate the materials of that.
The material, that's correct.
Are you a board member on Midstate Electric Cooperative?
Yes, I am.
And so Jim Anderson, for lack of a better term, works for you?
Well, he works for the board. And as you well know, a single board member has no clout in a, in a legal sense.
Okay. All right. Okay, I have no other questions today. And I've got nothing else to say on this. I, I have to think about things on this. I appreciate the work session and the comments and the discussion. It's been helpful for me.
So board, do you want to make a ruling on this tomorrow, or do you want to wait until the Road Advisory Meeting? And I don't know, maybe we could ask Kevin what the Road Advisory Meeting, or James, what the Road Advisory Meeting would accomplish to this discussion, because I think we'd have to bring that group up to speed to get all the facts again. And it could be quite a long discussion.
My, and the responsibility, no matter what, it still falls on us.
Yeah, the Road Advisory is an advisory board to us. So regardless of whatever the Road Advisory say, it's still going to be our decision.
I think it'd be worth hearing from the Road Advisory.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying that it wouldn't be. I, I'm perfectly fine with postponing. I don't know if I'll be ready for a decision tomorrow or not. So it's, it's up to you guys' discretion. I just don't want to behave in a way that they think that we're putting it off on them to make a decision.
I don't think we'd take that.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want the advisory board to be, feel like they have to make it.
Yeah, we're not trying to pass the buck, is what I
No, I don't think we'll go that way. I think we'd like to hash it out.
Okay.
There's wisdom in a multitude of counselors.
All right, so probably will not come up with a decision tomorrow. From what I'm hearing on consensus, is that correct, commissioners?
The one thing I will agree with is I agree with Paige. If we substantively rebuilt the guard rail to the point that it is already without using the work that Kevin's done with the new engineering and the new standards, yeah, that's out. I mean, we're asking for liability for the rest of our lives on that. And us knowingly know that that's substandard, we could be held liable personally. And that, that is out the door. That's not, in my mind, I would never vote yes to do it back the way it is right now.
So Kevin also needs an answer from us, because he needs to know how to move forward on this.
I'm, I'm going to move forward with the signing upgrades, just like I brought to you guys several weeks ago for the, for the corridor as a whole. Because with the new development that's coming into that region and just the fact that it needs to be done, we're going to move forward with that. So that, that's going to take place, but
Okay. So our next meeting after this, if it's not tomorrow, in regular session would be on fifteenth of March. Do we want a decision by fifteenth of March?
Well, the Road Advisory Meeting's on the second, so
It's the third.
The third, yeah. So, yeah, we can wait till then, our next meeting after.
Just trying to give Mr. Parks an idea too, when we potentially would come to a decision on this as well.
I think we have a decision by our next meeting.
Okay.
All right.
But nothing will be discussed tomorrow on this subject? It'll be discussed at the Road Advisory on Thursday?
Yeah.
Yes.
And so The only thing I would suggest in the short run is to get some, some temporary reflectors or something up there. I mean, there's the one that you stood up I mean, there's the one that you stood up the other day, but it seemed, it seems like it'd be worthwhile to have, you know, not wait until putting up the whole set of signs, but.
Those signs should be showing up pretty soon, shouldn't they?
Well, yeah, we can.
We could do so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, just a couple safety cones, you know.
So they can get stolen again. But we'll put them there.
Okay. We have, uh, a path of where we're going here?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for the discussion. Um, or as this goes, I think we're closed.
Thank you for the experience.
All right. Okay, um, we've still got several topics. How are you guys doing? Need a one thing break? Or are we good?
Can we, can I squeeze one in really quick?
Yeah, sure.
Because I have a meeting.
Sure.
I'll go fast, because I already had the information.
You should probably make a quick break.
Good.
I can come back after lunch, please.
No, we, we got so many things, we can just sneak through. Okay, Nikki Als with payroll overpayment policy.
Overpayment and deduction here, hopefully. So, um, you should have the policy and the two subsequent notices about, um, if there's an error. We've had errors in the past for a multitude of reasons, whether it be the, the software or the, the person, um, doing the work, there's been errors, but for some reason, in the past three months, we've had errors of significant value on both sides, whether it be a deduction or whether it be, um, an overpayment. And it has been, um, in our software for some reason. It's all pretty automatic, it's hard to see sometimes when something happens. Um, there was a deduction that didn't occur for someone, and we didn't really have anything other than they owed the money, so we, we needed it. Uh, I felt really bad for the gentleman when I just took a significant amount of money. And then on the opposite end of that, we've had, um, some overpayments that were significant that had happened over multiple pay periods, and, um, not having any policy couldn't really say, well, this is how we need to collect the money. It was, um, not in any way a controlled situation, and I felt bad on both sides, because the money went into someone's account when it shouldn't have. Um, so we worked with the person to get something figured out, but we really need to have a policy. If the county does something, um, to where we don't pay the person enough, there are , um, bully rules, Bureau of Oregon Labor rules, that say we need to correct that as immediately when it's found, but there's nothing for when we have an error on our end. So, the, I wrote this policy up that, um, I think is fair, it provides an opportunity when it's a, a large error, that the person, you know, we can work with them over a significant number of pay periods, um, and, but yet it gives us something to say, we're sorry this happened, here's what our policy is, and this is how we need to get either the funds back because we paid you too much, or because a deduction that should have occurred didn't occur. And generally speaking, we've not had any problems when there's been an error, but we've usually, they've been pretty small and not a big issue. The most recent errors have been pretty large, and it's been difficult.
So, the problem is too, is it's not like the old days where you actually got a check, everything is direct deposit, so people might not know exactly how much was deposited.
Well.
Well, they.
Not exactly true, because they still get the same exact information that they would get in a paper check, and they get it presented to them every single pay period. If they're not looking at it, it's available to them in three different ways as well. I mean, direct communication with me if they don't want to get it themselves. When they enter their time, it's right there in that system that they're using to enter their time, and then it's also emailed directly to them. So, if they're not seeing it, it's because they're just not choosing to see it. Um, I can't help them with that part of it.
So, how, how come these problems are happening? What are we gonna do about the problem itself?
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure that I can answer that entirely. Um, I, the one problem that happened where the person, two, actually five individuals in one pay period, and then two in a secondary pay period, and then one that had been over several pay periods, all since January first. I went over it for an entire day and a half with the software company. They do not know why it happened in any of those scenarios with the overpayment of salary. I, I don't know how to answer it. Um, it's, seems, I'm being very, very careful, um, now about making sure that I look at every single employee. Um, it's still not really super obvious if someone's, I don't know, I don't always know if someone has overtime, which would then, you know, jump their pay up, but.
So, it doesn't show their overtime on your program?
It does and it doesn't. I mean, the, the system shows a gross amount and a net amount in a singular motion of the, of the process, and what I'm doing now is if I see someone that seems a great deal higher than what they, what I think they should be, I'm going even, I'm like entering into them specifically to see if there's some reason for that, to verify that it's because of an overtime generation or, um, the possibility of their salary being paid twice, which is what happened to seven people. They, they got their, their salary paid twice. The software system did, um, two updates right at the beginning of the year. One was because of tax changes, and the other one was just software updates, and they don't know if maybe there was a glitch, because they all happened in January and two in February. And everything was working fine in December, so that there may have been something that happened then that, that caused this to happen. Um, one of them was working perfectly fine in December. The person had received pay for the same exact, um, you know, pay code or transaction, and it worked perfectly fine, but it did not work in the pre, in the next three pay periods. It calculated their pay at their regular rate instead of five percent of their hourly rate. There's, I, I don't know how, I don't know why it happened, neither does the software company, because it worked perfectly fine prior to that.
I really do think somehow we need to figure out why that's happening, because that's gonna stick you in a bad spot every month.
Um, I, I don't, I mean, they, they've looked at it, like I said, we spent a day and a half looking at it, there's not an answer for that. Um, it hasn't happened since. Um, I, before we moved to, but we've had this system for three years now, and it's worked great. There's been some quirky things, nothing huge, um, I, I just don't know why it happened. There's not an answer for it. Um, on my part, I'm doing more, I'm looking at things closer. I'm not relying so much on the automation. I, I'm trying to take more time to make sure that the numbers that are coming up are the correct numbers, and that's, that's all I can do.
And our employees, our employees need to do the same. They need to be checking their, it, it might be less than normal.
That's right.
And they need to, if they're getting paid more or less than they normally have, they need to come to you directly.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, some, yeah, they're, the software is our responsibility, and the work that comes out of it is our responsibility, but they also have some responsibility to be checking their pay slips regularly to make sure that, that information is correct, that what they're getting paid is correct. It, they have some responsibility in that as well, not just, you know, whoever's actually doing the payroll process. It could be that the, maybe the hours aren't entered correctly or approved correctly, um, before they even get to me.
So it's within the county's right to correct the issue?
It is.
And can an employee fight the issue?
Yes, so I researched through bully on both sides, whether, if they're underpaid or overpaid, and there's no, um, unless we have a policy in place, there's no reflection to how we collect that money within the bully, um, laws, other than to say that that was an overpayment and you're entitled to get it back, but if the employee, um, isn't gracious in giving it back, then you have to sue them to get it back. We don't want to do that. I mean, whether it's an error or, or not, if the person isn't entitled to the pay, they should be giving it back. And even our direct deposit agreement, at the bottom of it says, if there's an error, we're gonna take the money back, which, you know, limits them to, it actually says you can pull the money back without even discussing it with them, but I, I've never done that, I wouldn't do that to anybody.
So you're recommending this policy before straight?
Yes.
Okay.
It basically says that an, an overpayment or a deduction error, um, may occur due to many factors. It could be, but not limited to, you know, a late reporting of someone being put on leave of absence, and I wouldn't know that at the time that I do payroll, um, so they would, that would generate an overpayment. Um, it could be a, a, a simple personnel change, um, like someone getting in advance, they're moving up a step, but I didn't get that in time. Well, we are obligated to still pay them that, it comes in their next pay, generally speaking. Um, it could be, uh, in deductions for benefits, simple life insurance, when someone changes an age group, um, it raises their life insurance costs, but we don't know that until the bill comes. So it wouldn't have been deducted, say, the previous month, so that creates a deduction change that we need to collect for, that's a payment that they make. Um, it could be a time entry error, um, it could be my error, I, I could maybe enter something incorrectly. Um, there's multitude of reasons there could be an error, but everyone should understand that when there's an error, we need to correct it, and this allows that to happen in a reasonable way. It, it allows, uh, collection in the deduction or the overpayment in a time fashion, if someone needs to take time. Um, they've received the money and it's in their bank account, but who knows why they wouldn't be able to give it back out of, you know, the very next day that the error's found.
Right.
Um, we're not trying to put someone in a bind. Um, we just need to, the county needs to get the money back regardless of how the error occurred.
I notice that you don't have the box checked by, reviewed by county council?
Well, I don't know that, but I did give it to Melanie, so I assume she gave the pack, this information to her?
I didn't know you wanted me to. I thought you had, sorry.
I, I don't know that, does she, does she?
We probably should have her look at it, don't you think, before we approve it?
Yeah.
Should I just, can I just email her that today then and ask her to provide that before tomorrow's meeting?
Is that?
Normally, did, yeah, all department heads have access to.
Okay, okay. Yeah, if you don't mind.
No, I.
If she has time, that would be great.
Sure.
If she can review it before tomorrow, we're gonna have to put it off.
Okay.
How soon do you need it back if she can?
Well, hopefully there's no more errors directly.
Okay.
And the two errors, the, the one error that, um, is substantial, there's already been an agreement made with that person, uh, there wasn't, uh, any policy at the time, and so I, I agreed to what was acceptable for that person.
Okay. Anything else?
Don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll, I'll send this to her right now.
You got three minutes till your next meeting?
No, dang it, I have serotomus at noon, and last weekend I missed it and had to pay for lunch even though I wasn't there. I don't want to today, thank you.
All right. All right, we have Mr. Johnson, we have Ann, we have East Cascades Workforce Agreement, we have the museum board application, which is pretty quick, CDS Project Discussion, which will take some time, and Mrs. Leidy is on the phone, which we probably better get to that pretty fast, and then James has a homelessness discussion. Do we need to take a quick break?
We probably should, but we can go to Sharon's if we want to, and maybe even Darwin's.
I, I can be last, I mean, I would definitely go home.
Okay. Ann, you gotta?
I, I can do whatever you need.
Okay.
I was only gonna say, mine could just be discussion tomorrow if you'd like.
Okay.
You know, if you want to just push mine in then tomorrow, I'm fine with that.
Okay. We got more time tomorrow.
That's what I, I mean, I think you guys have a lot to say.
Okay, so, if you don't mind, for the record, we'll put off Ann's discussion for Wednesday. Does that work okay, Melanie? Okay. All right, so next up is CDS Project Discussion with Sharon Leidy. Welcome, Sharon, sorry it took so long.
No worries, I'm working away on your applications.
Okay, let me find my piece of paper here. Okay, so you sent us an email yesterday, um, highlighting, uh, one, two, three, four, five projects, and then two additional projects beyond that.
Yes.
I was able to talk to, uh, field representative for Mercury's office, Kevin Kobel, I believe that's his name.
Yeah, Kobel.
And, uh, did get to find out a little bit about each one. How would you like to proceed here, Sharon? Are you wanting, uh, to ultimately get, uh, what's our top three and?
Yeah, or, or two, or one, or whatever, that's what we need, we need a priority list, and then I'll update you on, uh, the commencement dance process.
Okay, so I could give you guys a quick narrative, if you want, from Mr. Kobel, and he did give us what he thought was the top three.
Okay.
All right, first one, uh, we have the concept for a justice center, and, uh, you know, the, we're requesting forty thousand dollars for an assessment for, excuse me, for needs for an assessment and design plan. Uh, he said that CDS funding doesn't like to come in on the front end, they like to come in on the back end, finishing end, and say, hey, we build a justice center. But they, they really don't want to pay for design and, uh.
So that's like at the bottom of this?
That's, that's not gonna go very far, he said.
Okay.
Can I interrupt one second? Shirley, do you want to share anything with us?
What time do you gotta go to Plymouth?
Oh, I'm, I'm fine.
You're good?
I'm good.
Sorry, go ahead.
And by the way, I gave him this list too, just so he kind of knew what things we're working on here for like ten.
Good deal.
Um, water infrastructure in Christmas Valley, he really liked this, uh, this was his third, uh, figured this was probably the top three, this, this is what he ranked third. Uh, he felt that four to five million was too much to ask for, and, uh, if we lower the amount, we'll have greater success. Um, says break it down, say this section for one to two million dollars, we'll do X amount of miles.
That's appropriate.
This, this, and this.
I'd be, I'm perfectly fine with that, because quite honestly, I see that the work is gonna take some time, and we can only do so much work at one point in time.
Yeah, so he suggested a much smaller amount, one to two million dollars.
Yeah.
Go, go from there.
Okay.
Okay, so, should I copy that, Sharon?
Yeah, and, and very, the work has to be accomplished in two thousand twenty-four, so we need to be mindful of the proposal in alignment with the fiscal year.
Yeah. Okay. That, well, that could change things.
Well, they think they could be ready by twenty twenty-four too, according to.
They could do, they could do.
Because they think they're gonna be done with what they got, potentially by twenty-four, but maybe not.
Okay.
Uh, next one, Lake County Fairgrounds, uh, they said that this was a really high ask, um, eight million, you don't see anything getting funded for eight million, really.
How about four?
The lower you ask, lower amount you ask for, the better chance you got. Okay? Um, this was not in the top three, and also suggests. This was not in the top three, and also suggested FEMA funding for potential opportunity two because of it being a.
Emergency, sorry?
Yeah, it's a command center and and things like that. Okay?
Damn it.
Number two. Or, excuse me, second place here, Lake County Public Safety Interoperable Radio and Microwave System. Really liked this one. Said three million is appropriate, and thinks it's good. Good, okay, that was his second favorite. First favorite is the Goose Lake Basin Fish Passage Irrigation Infrastructure and Flood Prevention. This was Randy Nider's proposal that you put together in five minutes?
That was.
And I called her last night to let her know that she needed to fine tune this a little bit. But the amount was, he thought was real good at one point eight eight, but she needed to further clarify what what would that expound.
Yeah.
Narrow down and explain what it is for.
Yeah, and very, she did all that this morning and got it to me.
Okay, next one.
Yes, I already got the draft.
I knew time is precious, so I asked her, I called her last night.
Good.
Yeah.
The next two, Cricket Grasshopper Spring, I went ahead and shared these with them, Sharon, because I know we have some love for both of them. He just didn't know where the Cricket Grasshopper Spring goes, yeah, you can apply, but I don't know. He did, he didn't find a lot of love for that. The next one, Deep Creek Highway Improvements. He wasn't sure on this one. He understood the need for a southern route travel that would be legal. That made a whole lot of sense to him, but he didn't know whether this fit under the RACE grant or something, but he was gonna look into it and get back to us, but he was a little bit uncertain about this, but didn't discourage us from applying for it. I do have three letters of support for the Deep Creek Curve Highway Improvement, Sharon, to give to you if you guys want to move forward with that, but it's outside the top three, so.
And how did this align with the other side, with the other senator? Did you get feedback from the one staffer on both?
I did not talk to anybody from Wyden's office. It's just too busy today, you know.
Yeah.
I didn't get it.
I think, yeah, I think their priorities are pretty similar, that they flowered.
And Mr. Koval says I can only speak for Merkley's office, so.
Yeah, he has to do that, yeah.
Just so we know, Congressman Vince and the Republican side don't want to see extra deficit spending to our our federal deficit, and they're not taking projects at this time. Okay.
Sounds good. So again, the top three are?
Number three, water infrastructure in Christmas Valley. Number two, Lake County Public Safety Interoperability, Radio and Microwave System. And number one, Goose Lake Basin Fish Passage Irrigation Infrastructure and Flood Prevention.
That was their favorite?
That was a sticker about it.
Okay, well.
I like, I would say my number one would be the number two.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he felt pretty strong about that too, so.
Yeah. That's a, that would, that would be huge.
So Sharon, did, what Randy gave you, did you feel like she covered more details? She narrowed it down, explained what would, the money would be?
Yeah. Yeah, and I got back there with more questions. I tried filling, I did the application for both the representatives and the senators, just to see what was missing and what we needed.
Okay.
While I was listening today.
And then I know Mr. Tag has provided you all the information for number two, is that correct?
Right, and if anything's missing, Daniel will get on it immediately. I'm not worried. So the the key one where we need information is Christmas Valley. Who's, you know, who's working the letters of support, the budget detail, things like that. So would I work with James on that?
Yeah, I mean, the the hard part is knowing that, can, give me a date again, it needs to be spent by twenty twenty-four or then twenty twenty-four?
According to the criteria, yeah, says unless you show, you know, the funds must be extended in the fiscal year of the probation.
Okay, so, okay, so by June of twenty twenty-five, it has to be spent?
Is that, are the fads on a June to?
July one to June thirtieth, yes.
Okay, so they're on a fiscal year, their fiscal year is not necessarily the calendar year?
They're.
Why not?
October one to September thirtieth.
Oh, to September thirtieth?
Yeah, their fiscal year is September thirtieth.
I should know that. Okay, so they're.
Sorry.
Okay, so their twenty twenty-four year ends September of twenty-four?
No.
Or no, it's.
It begins October one.
October one, okay, so then I just wanna.
Twenty-three.
All right.
It ends September thirtieth of twenty-four.
Okay, so that's bad, that's better. I just want to make sure I'm clear on those dates. That really does make a huge difference to them, their ability to actually get any work done. I will.
Yeah.
So Sharon, just for the off chance that all the top three make it, what would our liability be as far as the match?
Well, each of them is, has a different requirement, depending on who the issuing agency is. So I don't, I would have to look, you know, at the specific lending source. Are you asking specifically for Christmas Valley?
No, I'm, I I'm just saying, so we just by chance happen to get all three of those, would we have the money for matches for all three of them?
The watershed, the Goose Basin project, I can say yes. The the public safety one, I would, I haven't looked at Dan's budget on that yet. I don't know that I have that, you know, with the matching plans, but I believe Dan provided that.
I think there's.
So that Christmas Valley would be the one.
Work in kind?
Yes, yeah.
So there's.
You ask her a million, you need to match it. You could potentially be liable for half a million or Christmas Valley Water District or whatever that's called, yeah.
Okay, and does the work in kind qualify as a match for the Christmas Valley?
I I don't know, because that kind of detail is not described in in this initial information. We could research it, yeah. Did, Barry, did you gather anything from that conversation yesterday?
No, I didn't, not as far as match.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, we are, we secured the match funding for each of these projects, you know, because otherwise, you're not, you know, it's a, it's a notch down in your competitiveness ranking. And then you you don't have to accept the funds. I mean, if you literally could, we couldn't find the match money. It just can be, it has to be, I think it has to be.